We're going to open the meeting of September 3rd, Board of Selectmen. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped, your image and voice may be recorded. And, uh... Let's see, approval of minutes? What?
One set of September 3rd.
Yeah, we're here.
Did they?
It came this afternoon.
It came this afternoon?
Yeah.
I didn't see it. Did it go in the Google thing?
Yeah, it did.
Uh-oh. Well, I didn't read them. Does, uh... Do you two want to have comments or questions, or do you want to wait till next time?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
With the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so someone make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
Correspondence this evening.
General public comment? No comments? Alrighty. Um, well, we can do our appointment, Department update. Dave, would you like to step up to the plate?
Once again, nothing would make me happier.
I know. And we love having you here, too.
I thought of you this morning, were you on Crosby?
Sorry, yes, we were.
Okay, because I saw the sign when I came down, I'm thinking, oh, he's going to be down there somewhere.
Took six trees off of Crosby and started one on... Pull one this afternoon. Or tomorrow.
How many did you say we got?
I stopped counting, it's 600.
Is this the moths?
Wow.
Not the beetles?
No, it's gypsy moth damage.
From last year? Two years ago?
Two years, yeah.
Even if you had a truck, it would be a full-time job.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Alrighty.
All right.
Yeah. Good to know.
I only have one copy, I'm not sure if everybody got one.
Yes.
Okay. Um, first question I have is, uh, I didn't know I was scheduled this evening until I actually looked at the agenda, so did I miss an email?
No, I might not have sent it.
Okay, I didn't know if we were reverting back to the schedule that we originally set up when we started this whole thing, but...
Sorry about that.
That's all right, I just, uh... I'm good with it, I just didn't know if I missed something. I was on vacation last week and I went through everything thinking I might have missed something, but, um, I don't think I did. So, um, tree complaints, major problem still with old business. Uh, we did have a tree company and today, we're going to have them back tomorrow. Um, that'll give me, uh, budgeted two more days after this, so we don't get very far. We did, we did six trees today, so...
Six more tomorrow?
So...
Yeah, maybe, we'll be taking... Depends on the size of the trees, we're taking three giant ones down tomorrow and Crosby will spend most of the day there.
And you, again, how many days did you have budgeted?
So, I have $10,000 budgeted for tree removal. That gets me about seven and a days, eight days, depending.
Okay. And there's nothing like mass forestry, if there's even a division like that that can help, I'm sure it's just not us.
We've reached out, uh, to National Grid, they're going to supposedly hook me up with their forester, I haven't heard from back from them. I don't anticipate that we're going to get a warm, fuzzy reaction from them, but, you know, they're...
I'll be, uh, through the chair, I'll be in on that with you, so I'll make sure that I follow up with our rep and see if we can get something coordinated.
They're more reactive, they, you know, their... Policy is if the branches are more than 10 feet away from the wires, they don't take them down. So even if they're going to fall on the wires, if it's 10 feet away, they don't care the tree falls on the wires and then they react. The problem for me is now when a tree branch comes down, night and weekend, now it's an overtime call in for the guys. So last month I had three call-ins with trees that fell in the road. So, that's 12 hours out of my 80 hours that I budget for overtime. You know, it gets... It's going to be a problem. It is a problem, it's not going to be. Uh, let's see, get off the tree subject, we did the drain line on Pleasant Street which runs from... It drains the retention pond behind the school. It runs across country through a couple of private properties that, um... I can only assume that we should have been responsible for, so that's why I did that job. The, the line collapsed, flooded the residency ad, so we replaced that. Did some basin work on Allen Road, um, to get ready for next year's paving. So we're done with our construction, the town's construction, what we were going to be responsible for on Allen Road. That worked out very well, we only had one feisty resident, so...
But I saw a nice email come through, so...
Everybody was pretty good.
Thank you.
What are you going to do, it's going to be... Wait till they pave, it's going to be really a problem because of...
So I thought that's what you had done, no?
Paved?
Yeah.
Next year.
Okay.
We did all the catch basins and the drainage cross drains this year.
Alright.
Uh, trees are next on that road, we got to take down quite a few. Uh, we made a parking area on Sawyer Hill for the conservation group for oak something farm. Past the quarry on the left, there's a, an access to some conservation property up there.
On Summer Road?
Sawyer.
Sawyer Hill.
Oh, Sawyer Hill.
Great Oak. Great Oak Farm.
Great Oak Farm, right.
Okay.
So our seasonal employees are done, which, um, it, it worked out very well to have those two kids. Uh, one of them has gone back to school, to college, the other one has gone back to high school co-op and he's working every other week with us. Still, he's, it's, he's a good asset, he's a good kid and, um, I'm going to run out of money for that, so we'll see what, uh... I'm going to try to keep him as long as I can, but I think around the first of the year. Unless I can get, uh, right now, um, the state is reimbursing us for his pay 100%. Um, we're going to try to transition him, once he, he turns 18, he falls into a different category.
Ah-huh.
Um, it's actually an adult continuing education program, we're going to try to tap into that funding source. And that'll give us another $2,300 to keep him going, which would be nice, so...
Something you'd do next year, too?
I'd do this, uh, as long as there are, um...
People in funding.
Students that want to come.
Good.
I mean, this, this gentleman, young kid, is actually in a welding fabricating class. So this is kind of, you know, I told him flat out, we don't have a lot of that type of work and he still wanted to come, he had a great time this summer and it was, it was nice to have him.
Good.
It really worked out well, he's a good kid. And we're having a meeting with that, uh, state organization in two weeks, uh, here, they're going to have their, uh, monthly board meeting or, or quarterly board meeting, whatever, in, in this building, so... I'm trying to get, uh, other co-op, uh... One of the vocational schools to send a representative to get more schools involved in this.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's an over there, it's, they reimburse...
Who's having the quarterly meeting?
It's, um, Bay State Roads and... Some educational group and it's slipping my mind right now, but...
What?
UMass, right?
Correct.
Nice.
And that's here.
It's going to be here.
So did you find this program?
Um, you'll hear me say it many times, I'm very involved with Bay State Roads, UMass, it's a tremendous organization and t- uh, town, cities don't take advantage of it as much as they should. They're amazing, they'll custom tailor a course to teach you how to use that printer, you know, that, they'll do whatever, whatever you want to do.
Well, they cut down trees.
Yeah.
No, but we did take the two-day chainsaw class and the storm mitigation class.
Now, good. Have, do you reach out to ASAP or...
Um, I'm going to.
Okay.
I'm going to contact ASAP, uh, Monty Tech and Lomis there.
Okay.
We, when I was in Lomis there, we did a program, we actually had them come in and instruct the students how to build catch basins and drainage structures as part of this program. But we couldn't get any of the kids to go in co-op, we just... It's tough, you know, it's...
Depends on the interests, I suppose, and...
Well, I think once, if you could get a student involved and they realize what it is that we do outside of, you know, we wouldn't just dig in the dirt, there's so many things that are involved.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, when Aiden came in, he thought that, you know, this might be boring, but he had a great summer, he had a good time, you know, we kept sticking with different people.
Mm-hmm.
Good kid. So, he'll be at the meeting.
I was saying, I know, can we like interview him and get this...
He's going to be at the meeting, it's, uh, 26th?
I think that's what it said.
Is that a Thursday?
I think that's, yeah.
26th at noon.
Yes, it is a Thursday.
Can we get the item here?
Bay State Roads, you mean, or that meeting?
We could try.
Take a picture and submit it.
Yeah, we could try.
We could take a picture and submit it to the paper.
Okay, with a little write-up?
Give you a letter of thanks to him, too, if you'd like.
So, he came from Keith Tech also. He lives in Holliston and Holliston and Hopkinton turned down, uh, Highway Department's turned down his employment and they... One of the representatives from Bay State Roads contacted me and I said, I'll, I'll take him, why wouldn't you? It's, you know, it's...
Yeah.
Even if, you know, the person wasn't, the individual wasn't as astute as they might come across on the interview on the phone.
Right.
It's another set of hands and eyes that, you know, just sit in the truck and ride along or... It was tremendous having me.
Do you want to write a letter and then we'll sign it maybe next Monday if we can get it done and then present it on Tuesday, that would make a nice photo op and story.
Uh, presented Thursday, the 26th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Through the chair, question for Dave, do you want me to assist in reaching out to the vocational schools in the area?
That would be awesome.
Okay, if you have, if you have a sheet of paper with the information on the program, I'll, I'll add to that, okay?
I did call Lomis today, but the director wasn't in.
Okay.
Have you met already with, um, the superintendents of schools?
I have not.
Oh, okay.
This will be a good, good chance to...
Good chance to do that.
Meet and greet.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Now that we've totally distracted you from...
No, not distracted at all.
Sorry about that.
Like I say, I'm going to, um, I'm going to try to keep him on as long as I can and if we can transition to, uh, the adult continuing it, it'll prolong his, his employment with us. Okay, he, he, it's, he's very handy, you know, he does weld and fabricate, we have him do some repair work, but, you know, we just don't have that much to keep one person busy doing that all the time.
Right.
Yeah, if, while he's doing all this variety of things, if you can snap photos on your phone and...
We've taken some pictures, some are kind of, you know, candid, but...
Put a collection together, maybe we can...
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that?
That's it, little bit of building maintenance. That is good.
Are we looking for the winter for building maintenance, any, any big thing coming up to be aware of?
They come up, they, right, they come up when they come up, right?
Okay.
How are the, the town bar and the issues that you were having last year with...
So, June contacted me about that today. We haven't had any more issues, uh, since, uh, I think it was the end of May.
So you had these issues taken care of already?
Well, they, clearly took care of them and then the company left and two weeks after... The, the heat was on on one side, the air conditioning was on the other side, then I sent them email saying, email saying this is unacceptable. And their response was, the air conditioner can't be on in the storage bay because it doesn't have air conditioning. It was 80 degrees outside and it was 60 degrees inside, so I'm not sure how you achieved that without having air conditioning, but...
Did you take a picture of the thermostat?
I did take a picture of both thermostats.
Okay.
And I sent that email to, um, June today, the, the response was...
Oversized air handlers, is that what they're saying?
Yeah.
I've, I, believe it or not, I've heard that before.
Yeah, they wanted...
It's very common.
To get engineering involved and, you know, the, the parameters that are, if you want to change the parameters, the, the units might, might not be sized right in order to do that, I'm like, that's not the problem, there's a problem with the function of the system. The, whatever's driving that thing to turn it on and off isn't working the way it should. But it, it's been working all summer.
Well, if there's issues, just try to, try to get on it because once the warranty's out...
Yeah, well, they already threw that at me, but we've had, yeah, the warranty's already gone, it's expired.
Really?
But the problem existed, they were back three times prior to, so...
Lemon law?
Yeah, it hasn't been right since they turned the switch on.
Yeah. You just have to keep after them.
Yeah.
And the, and the sign things, sign issues?
I didn't get any last month, um, Peg sent me a few last week, I believe. Um, I haven't looked at them yet because I had like 300 emails this morning.
That was vacation.
It was too short, to be honest with you.
Alright.
Yeah, looking all tanned, are you getting your sunblock again? Hmm, okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Listen, I didn't ask, is there any questions other than the ones we already asked? We're good? Okay.
Be careful tomorrow.
Thank you.
Say hello to Vicky.
I will. Stay up for Crosby.
I will. Give you a toot in the morning when I go by.
Alright.
Alright, we're moving on to the town administrator update.
Okay. I have a couple of things related to, um, Dave's conversation with the board. First of all, um, CIPC has adopted a new capital improvement request form, it's attached to the town administrators' report this week. It's far more detailed than the prior form and it's going to be, it's going to be very useful for, for the finance committee and the board as capital requests start coming through. Because it's not just about the item itself, it's about what it's replacing, it's about, uh, impacts on municipal budgets and, and following fiscal years. So there's an awful lot more information on this year's form and, uh, there's going to be a requirement to attach justification. So I am having a special meeting next Wednesday from 10 to 11 for departments, boards and committees interested in submitting capital requests for the coming fiscal year and beyond uh, to walk them through the form and the requirements, uh, for capital request submissions moving forward.
So, no form, no submission?
No form by November 1st, no submission.
Okay.
That time is going to be difficult for some of your boards and committees.
It might be difficult, what, to do the legwork to get quotes?
Well, now, just from 10 to 11, you're having a meeting from 10 to 11.
Oh, 10 to 11, and I can, I can meet, I can meet, um, with board and committee reps separately, too, I'm just doing this as a special meeting. Um, this is primarily going to catch department heads, but if there are any ports and committees that can make it, that'd be great.
Okay.
I'm happy to meet with, um, with, with anyone at their convenience. Um, and I've sent, I've sent, uh, kind of abbreviated instructions, um, now, but I'll, I'll elaborate on those. Uh, building commissioner, uh, pre, uh, preliminary interviews are going to be held this week. Um, we have four candidates we're interviewing and no fewer than two will be brought to the board as early as the 23rd for, uh, final interviews, so as early as next Monday, uh, for final interviews. So I asked the board, uh, members to get me a couple of questions each, um, so we can, um, develop your, your full list of questions. Uh, fire chief position is posted, deadline October 11th. Treasure collector position is posted, deadline October 4th. I think we've gotten a few resumes so far for each of those. Uh, Mary is collecting all the resumes. Um, I'm taking over with preliminary interviews once all the resumes, uh, have been received. At your next, or at your meeting of September 30th, I hope to have a sample, uh, budget memo, uh, for you to use for the coming fiscal year. I understand the board, finance committee and personnel committee have all sent out memos, um, in preparation for the coming year's, uh, budget. So I've, um, I've reached out to the finance director and I'm going to talk to the personnel on Wednesday to see if there's some way we can consolidate some of the information on a single, uh, budget memo. I was supposed to attach a sample budget memo that I've used in the past for your review, I forgot to attach it tonight, so I'll be sure to get that to you. It's a very comprehensive memo, it talks about revenue projections and what we can afford, what we're expecting for budget submissions and things like that. So I'll be sure to get that to you, just so you can see, um, the detail that, that would be nice to have in it. Um, library septic system, uh, update, Evan Carloni, the volunteer, um, design engineer, project manager, um, is going to be directly communicating with, um, a contractor. We've lined up to do the digging for the soil testing and the town is going to be invoiced, uh, directly by the contractor, so we'll be receiving the invoices and paying them for all of the tasks in the project that require, um, town funding. Um, reminder, Coffee Talk 4.0 is going to be held on Wednesday, October 23rd at 7 o'clock at 19 Carter. That's going to immediately follow a short, um, regular meeting of the board from 6:30 to 7, also at 19 Carter. Um, I'm trying to pick and choose which things I should...
And the building will be open at 6:30, I talked to Evie.
Um, I, just for the board's information, I'm going to be out of the office this Thursday and Friday. Can I say why?
So proud.
Sure.
My brother is being promoted to Colonel in the Air Force and we're going to be at the Pentagon for this ceremony.
Alright.
Yay!
Very excited, the whole family's going. It's very exciting. Um, municipal vulnerability preparedness program, the MVP program, uh, seems as though once we started hearing things about the MVP program, there is just, there is now repeated information coming out and there is going to be a new, um, there's going to be an RFR for planning grants opening up at the end of this month. So I'm going to be reaching out to some key stakeholders, highway, police, uh, fire, planning, conservation, um, and others to determine the level of interest in proceeding, uh, with a community, um, a resiliency plan and, um, vulnerability, um, assessment, study. Once we have a plan in place and we are designated an MVP community, we will be eligible for potentially significant funding for additional planning work, uh, for infrastr- infrastructure upgrades and, and all kinds of things like that. So, there is value in doing it, I just want to make sure that we have buy-in to proceed.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, I am meeting with, uh, area town administrators and managers and CMRPC reps to talk about potential opportunities for shared services and equipment. Um, I started, um, by meeting, um, I met in Clinton last week, I'm going to be meeting in West Boylston next week and we'll, I'll probably be making my rounds just to start communicating with other administrators about our potential interests. And those are the highlights from this week's report.
Okay. Do you have, um, department head meetings on a regular basis?
Yes, every month, second Tuesday of every month, 10 o'clock. We had one last week, we went over, um, we spent quite a while going over the, um, performance appraisal process, so we did talk about that. Um, and we went around the table, uh, Chief Galvin had a brief, uh, presentation showing, um, the webinar, the online videos that are available to departments for Civics, Civic Plus, for training and utilizing Civic Plus. Um, that was a good intro, a- anyway, so, um, so we went around the table and talked about activities of the various departments. I'm happy to report that in writing to the board, I usually go around the table and just take notes for each department head and go around to, and so I can update you with that.
Okay, that'd be great. Alright, uh, moving on to old business, um, and coffee talk. Topics for coffee talk.
I marked up, I marked up this one, just as, uh...
Mm-huh.
Do you have, in red?
I don't know, Mary printed it out.
It's a red line?
Um, yeah, she redlined it.
Okay.
But it's not red.
Okay. So I just added a couple of things, I, I, I'm able, I'm able and willing to, um, to address some of these topics when the time comes, um, or chime in when needed.
Yeah, I mean, the whole intent, Margaret, was not, not to put you on the spot, but the idea... There's a lot that has happened since you've been here, a lot, a lot. So, just wanted to kind of share with the town, you know, besides opening it up to hay house things, what's on your mind? But just to share. You okay? Okay. But just kind of to, to share what's, um, going on. I mean, Lisa, was there anything that, any topic near and dear to your heart that you wanted to bring up, talk to, any grants you're involved in?
Nope.
Okay.
That's going to, October 23rd is going to be an interesting time, um, with regard to CPA. Bills will likely have been sent or will be about ready to be sent then, and people need to understand what they're going to see in their bills, so CPA might be... Might be an area of focus that night.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, as long as you're all right. Is there anything that you have near and dear to your heart that you want to talk through? I mean, and I can see this as, you know, free flowing, we don't necessarily have to do a one and a two, uh, I'm sure talk is going to swirl all over the place, but it was mainly just, um... You know, to give an idea to folks, so that maybe this will help to drive more involvement when they see the ideas that we want to talk about and, you know, will bring more people... Oh, Mary was kind enough to run me off a bunch of copies, thank you, Ms. Mary. I'll be distributing them down to 19 Carter and I'll even hang at the transfer station on a Saturday and give them out and at the general store and give them out and, um... When the blinky sign stops being busy, you know, we can put that up, so get the word out. And Mary, do you know if it's in the item, you said maybe it'll pop up in the item?
She shared it onto her Facebook.
Okay, and I'll get it on Berlin Facebook Connect in a few minutes.
Yeah, the one thing I would, would recommend is just if marijuana is going to be a topic that we put very strict parameters on it, that it's just informational, it's not really a...
Correct.
Yeah, because the, the whole thing could devolve into marijuana.
And who is, um, addressing the marijuana?
I think you could just say, this is how it works and this is where we are and this is not the appropriate forum for...
The HCA and that kind of thing?
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
We could share the responsibilities of the community that I attached to the last two town administrator reports, we could kind of go over those and say, what is the town responsible for as opposed to the CCC?
But just, this is your information, not...
Question and answer.
Okay. No, and, and, uh, I'm sure the three of us, four of us can control that if it starts to rat hole and we'll bring it back, okay.
Do you want to go down the list?
Plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What was that?
Do you want to just go, do, do we want to go down the list like this, exactly, or...
No, I mean, I, between all four of us, we can kind of sit there and check them off, um, if topics don't come up around that, but just, I mean, these seem to be the hotter, for lack of a better term, items that, um, you know, have come up over the past few months that we could talk to.
Okay.
How are we putting, um, Margaret, is your TA report going up online now?
Yes.
Because I would refer, most of these things, or a lot of these things have updates in that report, so I would also make sure we refer people to Margaret's report because that's a very good ongoing update if people are interested.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Let me look to see how recent...
Oh, no, no, I'm nervous.
I was pretty sure you were putting them up, so I wasn't trying to...
Well, I, I personally have it, Mary has helped with that, I just don't know how recent we've got, so we'll, we'll be sure...
Well, they're up there.
They're up there.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, good.
Because you, you give updates on these almost every week, so...
Mm-hmm. Alright, cool, I'll, um, I'll put this together, we can hand copies out and things like that, and I'll touch on them in the write-ups, but, uh, obviously, things can fall off, things can add to it, it's not cast in stone. It's just an idea of what we can cover in a couple of weeks.
And are we, is there a timeframe?
Start at 7 and whenever. It's usually an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd have a set, sort of...
I mean, there might be something that goes on and on and, for instance, the marijuana.
Well, that's why we're going to, that one.
Things like, uh, under grants with projects in town, um...
That's just an update?
It is, and the chiefs and, and Dave and I might be able to report on our recent, what, on, it's now, next week, we're going to be meeting with CMRPC, so we might be able to report on all those different programs that we could potentially get funding on. Is there very much on the agenda, Mary?
For the 23rd? 21st?
Well, I guess it doesn't matter now, October 23rd is quite a ways away.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sure there's nothing yet.
Keep thinking this is like next week.
Okay.
What do you mean, you don't know what's going to be on the agenda a month from now?
No, I was thinking September 23rd, that's my problem.
If she has any more beans, we'll have agendas through, uh, January of 2025. Did you reach out, Margaret, did you reach out to Chief Clark about maybe coming?
I reached out to all, I reached out to both chiefs and Dave.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I sent an email last week.
Awesome, thank you.
I'll confirm with them.
Okay. Alrighty.
Moving on to Selectmen Agenda Procedure. This is Kind Disorder, the second reading. Comments and questions from the board? Do we, I guess I, you know, when you're doing a policy or it's, it's a procedure, I guess. Wasn't sure if you wanted to be so specific as to putting like Channel 192 Berlin Cable TV, because it could change, we could...
We could, we could.
Is it 191? Oh.
And that's a, that's an argument to keep it generic.
Yes. So do, so is it the wishes of the board to just take things like that out?
I would leave them in there to make this useful to somebody who's reading it. I think it also means that if the cable changes, you have to go back and revisit things, which should be done anyways.
Yeah, it's a, that, you know how things fall off the.
Then do Channel 192, parentheses, channel subject to change, check frequently, something, something.
When was the last time it changed?
You can see the government access channel.
Not long ago.
So it's going to narrow it down because there's, there's government, there's education, and there's PEG.
Public Educational Governmental.
Whatever P is for PEG.
PEG.
Public.
Yeah.
Government?
Public Educational Governmental. So it's Channel 191?
191. So that has to be changed at least.
191, not 192. One of them is the high school.
192 is the high school. Oh, I thought Brittany, I thought I asked Brittany.
Well, it's true. I mean, and they did change not long ago. They used to be like Channel.
13.
13 or something. Then it moved and I didn't know where it went, so.
Was it government channel?
I don't know. Berlin Cable Television Access is fine with me. Because it does change.
What we could do is on the agendas, through the chair, sorry, under announcements, there's the announcement here by the chair. We could actually add the channel number to every agenda to make sure that the public sees what channel it's airing on.
Okay.
And that way it'll be that much easier to change as we, as we move forward.
I just had a question on, I guess it's page three. At the bottom of the first paragraph, call to order. I, I guess I was thinking we should cross out Else the Clerk in said order. Because it's.
If she's there by herself, she can't do it.
Exactly.
I kind of looked at that too and went, it doesn't really matter because it's never, yeah.
I mean, it just.
It's never going to happen, but.
Unless the vice chair doesn't want to run the meeting, and then the clerk would run the meeting. I guess that's the only situation where that would be.
I'm sorry, what paragraph are you on again?
It's under called order. It's at the top of the page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was at the bottom of the page. Okay.
End of that, that last few words in that first paragraph, under called order.
Okay.
It just didn't really make sense to me.
Okay, so just straight through Else the Clerk in said order?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. With a three-member board, that makes sense.
And I was wondering, I was thinking about this today. Do we need, is this the place where you would put the procedures for, like, are, what we're working on, the packets?
The, the agenda packet materials?
Yeah, or is that another, would that be another document? Or is that just maybe a discussion that we need to have?
That's the board. The boards and procedures that you were maybe thinking about doing for the office.
Mm-hmm. I think that would be, that could be under rules and procedures. Although I think that one could potentially fit somewhere in, in this document though, too. This is about.
Or this could be generic enough. It's just saying packets will be.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't have to go into the specifics. But I think at some point, we need to have a discussion on what we're doing and how to make it work. Just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah. I actually think there's, there could be a place here. I just, I don't know exactly where it would fit perfectly. But maybe under meeting documentation.
Do we want to approve this as is tonight? And then if you choose to make amendments, we can go back and do that? Or?
With those changes that I suggested?
I have one more. Were you talking about agendas? I'm assuming that the timeframe will change if we have a Tuesday meeting?
Where are you?
Right under agendas. So it talks about posted no later than 7:00 PM on the Thursday before Monday meeting. It doesn't happen often, but sometimes we don't have Monday meetings. So do you need to make that?
The next sentence.
That differential?
Read the next sentence then.
Oh, three days before. Okay. So then Friday, Monday, Tuesday? Okay. Pingin', no pingin'. I know everyone checked their phones.
No, it's mine.
Okay, that's all I had on, on that document.
Okay. See, the red line before you has comments that were offered by, by board members, Stone and Wysocki. And we'll take a look at sub-language to insert after approval for agenda packet materials. The filing and posting of agenda packet materials.
And is, this is in the Google Docs too, correct? I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, everything's up there.
I just, I figured I'd already read it because I read the nine-three. I didn't see the comments from the other board members.
I don't.
That got added today.
Hmm?
That got added today.
Yes, I did that today. I worked on that this morning.
Okay. So do we want to approve this for the second read? And then just look at the final document in the, at the next meeting, or?
Why don't we approve what's there and then anything additional we just changed, we just changed.
And I could, I could bring you, I could bring you text, I could bring you language for your next meeting for that particular section.
Okay.
To add.
Because I didn't catch the red line version, so that's why I didn't know.
Oh, you want time to review?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So agenda item for next week?
So this will be for next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
And maybe we can have that language inserted by then, too.
Mary, you got that?
Hmm?
Okay.
Okay. And the policy and procedure on use of legal counsel.
Through the chair, this is also a markup from earlier today. This was based on request from board member Stone to clarify repeated consulting with legal counsel and acquiring the proper approvals to do that.
Okay, and I didn't catch this red line version either, because it didn't go in until what, today?
Mm-hmm.
So can we look at this one more time next meeting?
Sure.
Thanks. Multiple, how do we say this? Obligie? Obligie?
Obligie.
Obligie?
I've used.
There's tomato, tomato. Anyway, we're going to look at this agreement, the POTUS Solar Project, 3344 Randall Road.
I understand the board met with the project developers back in June, is it?
I think so.
Was June, and approved the decommissioning amount, the surety amount. So that has been executed. And the vendor has requested signature from the primary obligie on a multiple obligie, obligie, obligie rider.
Obligie.
Obligie. Okay, we will now pronounce it properly.
There you go.
I would recommend that the board sign this, subject to review by, by our solar consultant.
Do you want to hear that motion?
So moved.
So seconded.
And this is the chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're ever curious.
Thank you.
Moving on to the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy.
Currently, the personnel policy and procedures contains a small section on the second to last page, under miscellaneous policies. The policy is specific to drugs and alcohol. But it was written well before recreational marijuana was legalized in Massachusetts. And so the rules in many instances have changed. However, the employer, the town, still has a right to prohibit the use of marijuana as a legal recreational drug on town premises or during town work time. So this policy is actually from, drafted from a KP Law policy that was issued to all of its, all of its communities. And I've drafted this for the board's review tonight and the personnel committee's review on, on Wednesday night.
So this is completely different from what we had in place?
This is much more comprehensive. And it includes an acknowledgement form that must be signed off by the employee on adoption of the policy and by any new employees. So this provides an extra layer of protection for the town.
Okay. So I'm going to play devil's advocate on this one. On procedures number three, A. Use of controlled substances impairs an employee's ability to perform the employee's job. So obviously, there's no test, for lack of a better word, to, for any police department to say, so-and-so, you're driving, I think you're high. So how do, if there is a one for that, how do we, or who would be the one to say, I think so-and-so's ability to perform their job is impaired? How do you, how do you judge that to say, I just had a fight with Chris. She's going to say not-nice things, you know, this one, oh, they're going to say good things. So how do you judge that without going down that road of discrimination and that?
So there is, there would be some reasonable suspicion component. So you might, there might be an odor. You might have to interview the employee right there and ask. You could get a denial. You could, a supervisor could notice that there is a change in the level of activity by the employee. And notice there is some sort of impairment in an ability to perform the job. It would be, it would likely be me that would step in and conduct an interview right there. It's not, yes, you're absolutely right. Alcohol is much easier. You can subject employees to random drug testing or, but, but with this, we'd really just have to be, we'd have to be frank. And we'd have to, we'd have to actually interview the employee.
And what if I refuse to be interviewed by you?
Then I, then note would be made and there would be reasonable suspicion and we would follow up on that.
Okay.
This is standard from KP Law.
Mm-hmm, this is.
And this also probably helps out with Maya and our liability, I'm guessing, which is why KP Law.
Yes.
Suggested it.
And this is for all employees, regardless if you've been here for a thousand years. You have to go back and sign it or your brand.
Exactly. Upon adoption of this policy, I'm going to be circulating this for all departments to have employees sign. And if there's a refusal to sign, then there is, that's on the acknowledgement form. There is, the employee could potentially be subject to disciplinary action for that.
All right, so you'll give this to all the department heads? And then the department heads will be responsible for trickling it down?
That's right. I'll be collecting them and they'll be put in the personnel file.
Okay. You have a question? What's that?
This is actually for paid employees, so employees that would be subject. But it's really anyone who is subject to the town's electronic usage policy. And I'm trying to think the other policies that we have sign-offs on.
Corey.
Sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment policy, right, yeah. So it would be anyone who is required to sign off on the town's employee policies.
I think Dennis does include some boards and committees as employees. He counts them as employees, such as Florida Health.
It's probably anybody who gets paid.
Right.
And so if anybody who does get paid would be subject to this. Or it'd be consistent with Dennis's list of employees.
The three of us. The four of us.
So are you looking, this is the first reading?
This is the first reading, yes. And Personnel Committee will review it on Wednesday night. So if they have any comments, I'll include them on the board's copy when you, on Monday night, next Monday night.
Okay.
Okay, I think I sent this to Personnel Committee.
Can we do that, can we get that like before next Monday?
With the comments on it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. All right. We've got public comment guidelines.
Margaret, senior workup or work, chief veteran or senior workup or paid employees?
Yes, it's going to be consistent with, with the list the treasurer keeps.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about this, Margaret?
Public comment guidelines?
Yeah.
So public comment guidelines would actually, these are guidelines that are meant for attendees of the board's meetings or people that are actually going to be coming to the meetings to understand what the, what the expectations and rights are under public comment during the board's meetings. This is a sheet that could be posted on the wall in meeting rooms. It could be, it could be attached to agendas. And it certainly can be attached to the agenda procedures. So these are just basic guidelines that go along with the, with the agenda procedures that, that provide kind of a structure for public comment.
It could even go on my town government somewhere, I would assume, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions?
So for those folks who maybe don't go out to the web or read anything or bad words, you know, go through agendas or look at specific information and they just come and have a seat. How do we explain this? Because I don't want it to come across as we're shutting people down. I like you, you can talk for five minutes. I don't like you, you can only talk for three. I mean, I just want to make sure that the audience there and here is well-versed on what we're doing.
Posted on the door.
Okay.
And just a gentle reminder.
One of the things that we, we did on school committee was to put it on the back of agendas. But as you see, no one has an agenda before them.
Well.
But your new policy is to have printed out copies of the agenda available in the audience.
Right.
There'd be a certain number of them.
And through the chair, on the agenda procedures, I know that the board is going to take another week to review this. But there is a small change under announcements on this procedure that, that states guidelines for the general public comment portion of the agenda would be another appropriate announcement. So the chair could actually make an announcement regarding public comment at the beginning of each meeting when the, when the chair does the other announcement about video recording.
So like shorten it up or?
Or just add that public comment guidelines are posted on the door, on the wall of the meeting room?
Okay. Put it on the agenda so we remember. Yeah. If there's no other comments, then we'll move on?
I just ask that any comments on the, on the guidelines or any of the. Um, I just ask that any comments on the, um, on the guidelines or any of the documents under first reading, or in this case, second reading tonight, if you could just get those to me as soon as possible, so it can alert me to update the doc.
Is that the procedure you wanna take? You want us to do it individually?
I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking board members to provide them individually, um, so I can do red lines before the procedures are actually approved.
Rather than doing it like right at the meeting?
Yeah, it, it shortens it up if she has them prior.
Okay, but then we have to get them, that's right, by the weekend.
That's right. Or you'll have to do a standard second reading for those that do have markups and comments.
Perhaps our markups need to be in by Wednesday. How's that? Does that work?
Most of the time.
Well, if it doesn't, then we can put it off till the next week, but let's just say our markups have to be up.
Okay, cause I wasn't, I wasn't really clear on that, whether we needed to submit our markups, cause that's why I brought mine up tonight.
Mm-hmm, okay. So I would invite, I would invite any comments to be submitted to me and, um, yeah, and, and if you could get them to me by Wednesday, it's on me to get them done.
And then you just include all of them in the markup?
I would, I would, in a, in a red line version.
Right.
Include them for the board's, for the entire board's review and you can continue to discuss them, um, or you could approve them as amended.
Okay. All right. Uh, board questions and comments?
It's the PEG section. No, um, when I was going through my email and I, I put a sticky on this for the 16th, um, notice of decision on a petition for a special permit, ZPT Energy Solutions, we, it came through an email and, and I specifically wrote it down that we were gonna talk about it tonight, but...
That's the, oh, multiple obligee.
Oh, is this the obligee thing? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that it? No.
I can do more. No, I'm good. I'm good. I only had that one. Somebody make note of that, then I only have one tonight.
All right. Uh, there's no other comments or questions from the board? Um, do we have need? Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
We have need for an exec, executive session, um, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, that would be the fire department. And, uh, number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or spec, special law or federal grant in aid requirement. And that is an update on cannabis host community agreement, negotiations. And we have to take a roll call vote, so...
Coming back to adjourn.
And we will be, coming back only to adjourn.
Wysocki, aye.
Keef, aye.
Stone, aye.